Welcome everyone at this time I would like to call it July thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, regular board meeting to order at six oh three P M. At this time, I would like to ask new member Steve Wild if you will lead us in location.
Let's pray. Father, thank you so much for your love and your grace to us and Lord all the good things that you give us knowing every good gift comes from you. And Lord, I thank you for our school staff administration, Lord, all these positions you filled and Lord, as we prepare to begin a new school year, I pray that it can be one that's great for all our students and our staff, for our parents, Lord, that that we can honor you in what we do here in Pickens County. And Lord, I'm grateful for all the great people that we have here and the new ones that have come. I pray you let them feel welcomed and prepare them to enjoy this community. Lord, I pray that you ever give us wisdom, discernment, and grace that we can be the people we need to be as we lead this system. And I ask you to do that in Christ's name. Amen.
Please remain standing. Pastor Miss Amy Gibson will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Doctor Thomas, do you have any amendments to this agenda?
No, sir, I do not.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Miss Gibson?
Second.
And Mr. Wild. Is there any discussion? All in favor, suited by phone, confirmed by saying aye.
Aye.
Sue. We don't have this. Sue.
Oh, sorry, I had to move on.
Thank you. The agenda is approved five oh. And the next item is recognitions. Doctor Thomas, would you like to introduce?
Sure, the very first recognition we have is our twenty twenty-three TSA recognitions with our CTA director, Carissa Parker. So we'll have Carissa come to the podium please. Thank you.
Good evening, Doctor Thomas, Chairman Gartrill, and members of the board. I'm excited to be here tonight and honored to be able to recognize the hard work and achievements of a group of students from our high school chapter of the Technology Student Association. These students, six different students qualified back in March at the Georgia TSA State Leadership Conference in their respective competitive events to attend and compete at the National TSA Contest. So I'm going to begin with John Carter Wilson, who was not able to be with us tonight, but John placed in the top three at the State Leadership Conference in Essays on Technology. In the Drone Challenge UAV, we had a team of three who placed in the top three, and the members of that team are Jackson Osmer, Emily Cairo, and Jansen Abner. So if anybody's one of those students present. Congratulations to that team, we're super proud of them. And then we also had a team of two who placed in the top three at the State Leadership Conference in Data Science and Analytics, and that team is Luke Quarles and Jerry Spites. They took them up here because four different members from the TSA chapter were able to actually travel to the National TSA Conference. So we had a couple of students who had some conflicts, and even though they they qualified and could have competed, were unable to go, but we sent four students just a couple of weeks ago over to Louisville, Kentucky to compete, and we had a top ten finalist in the nation, our team, our data science and analytics team, Ms. Jerry Spites and Luke Quarles, were in the top ten in the whole nation. And in the Drone Challenge UAV, Jackson Osmer and Emily Cairo were national level semifinalists at the National. In addition to excelling in the competitive events, we had two PHS TSA members who were also recognized in the TSA Achievement Program and the TSA Honor Society. And those students are Luke Quarles and Jerry Spites. They were both Gold Achievement Award recipients. The TSA Achievement Program Pathways to Excellence recognizes TSA student members who have engaged in the areas of service leadership, STEM immersion, and personal and professional development. The Gold Achievement is the highest level and is presented annually at the National TSA Conference. Only forty-seven people nationwide met the criteria to earn it this year. Jerry and Luke were inducted into the National TSA Honor Society. The National TSA Technical Honor Society recognizes students for their efforts in academic studies, in leadership, and in service to their school and communities. The goal of the Technology Honor Society are to motivate TSA members to work to improve and maintain high academic marks, to promote the undertaking of leadership roles in their school and community, and to promote participation in service activities that benefit their school and community. It's important to note that only eleven people from Georgia were inducted, and we had two. Important to note is that only three Georgia TSA members who were inducted into the Honor Society also earned the Gold Achievement Award, and both Jerry and Luke from our chapter did that. If I did not ask Ms. Quarles to come up and join her students, because without her leadership and dedication to TSA, congratulations, she did as well, Ms. Quarles. We're very proud of all of you. Thank you.
Mr. Garth, at this time we'll call up Chris Wallace, our Chief Operations Officer, to recognize our Freedom Cruisers donation today.
Thank you, Doctor Thomas, board members. I appreciate the opportunity to stand before you this evening and recognize a group of people that I've gotten to know here recently. We were contacted by Captain John Cagle, Pickens County Sheriff's Department, and he wanted to find out about some students might be in need about a donation that he was interested in, and a car club that he was involved in. He started telling me a little bit about it, and of course, I got with with Beth Thompson, our nutrition director, and we we determined that there was some need there for some students to pay some pay some fees and charges that had been accrued as a result of the new or renewed standards of getting kids back on the Free and Reduced Lunch Program, and we haven't had to have families fill those forms out for a couple of years because the government had had everyone qualify. So we began looking at a way to do this, and Captain Cagle had made a donation on his own and had put me in touch with Pickens Freedom Cruisers, and really excited to have a few of those folks here tonight to make this donation. But I want to tell you a little bit about the Freedom Cruisers. They're a nonprofit car club here in Pickens County, and they were established in September of twenty twenty, and their goal is to gather the community to enjoy their passion and sharing their passion, classic cars and motorcycles. With this, they're hopefully they can make a difference in our community by taking funds collected at the cruise ends and shows that they host and give those funds back to help people and organizations right here in Pickens County. And I don't think I saw Captain Cagle out here tonight, but he he had been working on, I believe it was a Netflix or Hulu series about a crime that he had been investigating when he worked with the GBI, and they demanded that they pay him, and he didn't really take the money, but he took that money and donated it to this cause as well personally, so I thought that was really neat. But at this time, I'd like to ask for any of the members that are here of the Pickens Freedom Cruisers to come forward, and let's recognize them and show them that we appreciate their generosity on behalf of the students up in Pickens County, and thank you for everything they're doing. So guys, if y'all are here, come on up. And they also want me to remind anyone, if you if you want to go to their website or Facebook page to see their events, and please come out and support, they do a lot of great things in our community, and we really do appreciate your generosity. Thank you so much for for this donation, and it'll be put to good use, I can promise you. So thank you all very much for being here tonight as well. At this time, we roll into the next part of the right here. So we have a special recognition tonight that I can speak to personally about the quality of this individual, having grown up with him and and worked with him in the professional setting here in the school district, but one of our school nurses, Ms. Melissa Fawcett, has been awarded the twenty twenty-three Georgia Nurse Association School Nurse of the Year Award for Licensed Practical Nurses here in the state of Georgia. And the winner of this was announced at the GASN Annual Meeting in Savannah on June fourteenth. Nurse Melissa was unable to attend due to being at the Grand Assembly for her daughters who won the Rainbow Girl of the Year first place, and Rose Lecture Appointed Grand Hope, the Martha Hardison Memorial, and Rainbow Scholarships of all which are very high honors. So she wasn't able to be there, but they did recognize her, and I think they did it virtually right, so they had her had her there virtually, so that was pretty cool. Melissa is leaving the legacy of outstanding morals and values and how to put others before herself in acts of service. For her nomination, the nomination of the year stated the following: She is the total nursing package. She is kind, compassionate, and knowledgeable. She possesses the necessary skill set that is needed to be an exemplary school nurse: nursing knowledge, communication skills, and emotional intelligence. She served in one of our five title-one schools and was instrumental in bringing dental services to our district. Due to her quick acting, she saved the life of a child. This child was hospitalized with elevated cardiac enzymes. Children's Healthcare Atlanta doctors said that the child would not be alive without the life-saving measures taken by this child's school nurse. She consistently demonstrates excellence excellence in school nursing practice and is making a difference in the lives of children, the school community, and the health of and the health of the population as a whole here in Pickens County. So at this time, I'd like to get Gil Smith, our Director of Health, up here as well, and we would like to recognize Melissa Fawcett for her outstanding achievement, and can't tell you how fortunate we are to have her in our school district serving our kids every day. So I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Smith and let her say a couple of things, and then we will get her up here and present her. Sound good?
I didn't know I was going to speak, and I could talk all day about how fabulous Nurse Melissa is and how helpless we are to have her on our team. And she is an exemplary school nurse, and she sets an example for others to follow, and I'm very proud to have her on our team. So Melissa, would you come forward, and we see your award?
You have her family members to come up too? Let's get you in the picture as well.
Congratulations to our TSA team, that's fantastic, we're very proud of it. Freedom Cruisers, thank you very much, much appreciated. And to Nurse Fawcett, thank you so much, and God bless you. The next item on our agenda is superintendent reports. Doctor Thomas, I'll turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Garth. At this time, we'll have Amy Smith, our Chief Financial Officer, come to the podium and give us a brief financial update.
You can just go ahead and tell them, they can go with it.
Yes, we should follow through.
Watching them turn a slip and take eyes at the ones who really wanted to and wouldn't get upset.
And it would not be the first time that Ms. Smith has.
Clear.
That hot-keeping students hard at the fault.
I'll tell you what, it is, and I'm always the one that follows it, maybe we need to change the order this weekend, but. Okay, Ms. Martha has our report pulled up. This is our general fund summary for the end of June. We've collected ninety-eight point two percent of our budgeted revenue and expended ninety-four point six nine percent of our budgeted expenditures. And when it comes to general fund at this point, we will still have some revenue coming in. We'll still get those property taxes for another month and a half, so that's through the end of August. We have railroad equipment tax, intangible and real estate transfer tax, and then we still have some state grants that we, you know, we have requested our revenue, but we haven't received it yet. But those things will be backed into this year, even though we may receive them in July or August. That is the way the state has it set up so that it goes with the appropriate year. We have a few more items you'll see. We still have a few encumbrances open as we go through those and make sure that we do not need to set up a payable of some sort. If it is an FY twenty-three expense, we do have to book it in a way that it will show up in FY twenty-three. So we are doing a lot of cleanup at this point. Just scroll down, Martha. Fund one fifty consolidation of funds. This reflects expenditures through the end of June. The transfers for the month have only been done through May. Again, we are in the process of cleaning up. I had some questions about this, so I'm going to explain just a little bit. This is a blend of general fund and federal funds, so we have to put it in another fund because we have to track it separately. When we're done, the amount of revenue that goes into this account will equal to the penny the amount of expenditures, because we push the expense out to general fund and out to those federal grants. So that becomes a wash account. So it's basically somewhere for us to separate it, track it, explain it, document it, do lots of entries, and then we push it back to the appropriate place. So don't panic when it looks like it's over, we're not done, but when we are, that very bottom number will be zero. Revenue will tie to expense, so it is a wash account. Debt service, always happy to say we have no debt. Capital outlay, our squashed revenue for June was seven hundred thirty-one thousand four hundred ten dollars and ten cents. We earned the interest of eight hundred eighty-five dollars and seventy-nine cents. Expenses for the month totaled one hundred sixty-nine dollars, excuse me, one hundred and sixty-nine thousand two hundred twenty-six dollars and twenty-one cents, and that brought our month-end squashed balance to eleven million, three hundred thirty-nine thousand, four hundred twenty-one dollars and thirty-one cents. Of course, we have some plans for that for next year. Special revenue, this is where our federal grants are housed and our school food program. We've collected eighty-four point nine eight percent of our budgeted revenue and expended ninety-seven point one zero percent of our budgeted expenditures. These grants take a good bit longer to collect. We have, we're in the process of doing what they call completion reports. Every single grant has to have a completion report at the end of the year. That means you you tell them how much we spent, we have to complete a good bit of information, send it in, we can request our drawdown, and then from the time we submit it, it's typically at least three weeks before we get it. But again, we still, if it is for twenty-three, we have to budget that, we do a receivable or payable, whether we owe it or we're going to receive it, back into twenty-three. So when we're done, in about three months, two and a half months, all of it will have all twenty-three expense in the proper place. So it does take a little work in the background, lots of paperwork, lots of calculations. We have to move some things around, but everything does look like it's on track. Our revenue should exceed our expense if everything comes in like we think it will. So we are well within budget. We do not see anything that's an anomaly that we are concerned about at all. Everything went great this year. Appreciate all the work from the folks out in the in the schools and in the departments. Without them listening and doing the paperwork that we need, it would be a lot harder for us to get this accomplished, but it's great when we come in under budget. I always like to do that. This is also the time of the year where I have to report every quarter, the school activity accounts and their activity. Just a second. I'll just remind you, we're required to present this within forty-five days of the end of each quarter. It has each school, these are their internal accounts. It has their beginning balance, their revenue per quarter, and their expense per quarter, and the total at the end of the quarter. So this, scroll down just a little bit so they can see the last quarter. Uh-oh. I don't know about that. Okay, there we go. But we are required by the state to present this at least quarterly to the board for you to review and approve. Y'all have any questions? Did everyone receive an audit report from FY twenty-two? Should have probably by email if you, more than likely, were sending your email. Just need to confirm everybody did. If you didn't, please get in touch with me, and I'll make sure that you get it. That's all I have right now.
Good job. Thank you, Ms. Smith. Mr. Garth, at this time we'll call up Chris Wallace, our Chief Operations Officer, to give us a brief operations and construction update.
Thank you, again, Doctor Thomas. As is the case this time of year, every year, really busy for our department, and really busy this time of year for us to get in the schools so we can cheer up and not have to put back before the next day or before over the weekend. So appreciate all the administrators and folks getting back in the schools here, being patient with us. We've got a few things in progress, so got a mess up to fix up sometimes, and and we've got some good stuff happening. So appreciate their patience. We will have you ready to go on day one, and certainly looking forward to getting these schools ready to receive kids. So just a few things I put that are in progress. Ceiling tile replacement and repairs around the district. Up to date here, around actually over now seven hundred ceiling tiles have been replaced over the summer so far, just damaged or stained as a result of leaks. We're also keeping track of the ones, so we have a baseline to know whether if we have the leak repaired or if, you know, it's a new leak. So now we have kind of a baseline for that, taking notes, tracking that, documenting that a little bit better. HVAC returns to diffusers, just regular cleaning, making sure they're clean, the air coming through there, not getting any buildup, and that also helps us with a baseline for going to the future and knowing what we got if we're creating more dust or more something in an in an area, kind of tells us what's going on there. We can track that a little bit better and pinpoint maybe there's a problem, especially with moisture. Pressure washing, we have one person doing nothing but pressure washing sidewalks, entrances at our buildings, and something that's needed, I think, you know, it's a yearly thing. There's a lot of concrete in our in our district to keep up in curbs and sidewalks. So I've got that going on. Of course, the VCT flooring, the waxing that goes on every year, we're getting less and less of that every year because we're replacing a lot with LVP, it doesn't require that, but we still have a lot of VCT flooring. ABM handles that, and my understanding is, I was told that we will wrap up the last of that tomorrow in our district, have those floors done, ready to go, start moving folks in and getting them ready to go. And then also HVAC replacement units, we have an active project going on at Tate right now, and then just wrapped one up at at Pickens High School, which was a water-cooled heat pump unit up in the media center. And it was a little invasive to do, so we really need to wait till till we got students out of there to address it, but they wrapped up with it today, and all is well there. And then it's wood floor, we're finishing that at Tate. We still have some hardwood floors that we have in our facilities, and Tate being the one there that has students in it. We also have some in the historical building, but we had those floors refinished down there and got those looking good, ready to go. And so that wraps up the maintenance report and the kind of the projects we have going on, with the exception of one more at the high school, and it falls under safety and security. As you may have heard, the governor allotted, you know, in the legislature, fifty thousand dollars per school in safety grants, and so we we received three hundred thousand dollars total there. And one of the things that I felt like was really important was the the high school's only school that didn't have a safety vestibule. Now, we have a welcome center there out front, it's manned during during school hours, but you could walk into the front office, and there wasn't really any mechanical way to stop you from going on into the school. So we, you know, obviously someone's there, but we we wanted to fix that and remedy that. Every other school, you have to be buzzed into the school, and so starting this year, school, when school starts, we'll have that repaired and fixed, and we completely remodeled the front office at the high school. It doesn't look great right now, does it, Mr. Combs, but it's going to. But if Martha, if you'll pull up those pictures, I brought, I I took a couple of pictures of it in progress, you can kind of see what we're dealing with, and I'll walk you through those really quick. This was kind of the vision I had for it. We have a situation where open receptionist area, a main entry where you can walk in, you could walk in two separate doors and get in the office, which you say, well, what's the big deal about getting in the office? That's not a, that's not as much a concern as getting in the school, but those offices lead to the school without being stopped by anyone possibly. So there was really three ways to get into the school from the front office. So that's on the left, on the right, you can see we've shut this down, buzz in into the school, buzz in into the office, and that'll all be controlled by the receptionist. So once you come into the office, you can't get any further without someone activating the door to get you in. So it, I hate that we have to operate like this nowadays, but, you know, this is what we have to do, it's the world we live in, and so this is going to protect the receptionists, protect the people from, you know, the students and staff inside the school, and going to create a much safer space there as a deterrent for people to get in that we don't need to be in there. So appreciate the patience of those folks at the high school. Go ahead and scroll up, Martha, if you don't care. We're going to have a few, there's a few more, there's a couple of photos. So on the left there, that's what it did look like with the open receptionist area, and then on the right, where we built the wall across there, if you want to keep on, keep on going, there's a few more. Just want to give you an idea. So that was kind of behind looking out. So the rest of the receptionist area had a good view of the doors coming in and doors to the school, but it was wide open. And again, if she turns to go, you know, drop some mail off or go to to find someone for something, then it's it's wide open. So being closed, this area is going to be a little, the the mailroom there in that that right picture, and if you'll scroll up, it'll show you the view from inside the receptionist area, what it's going to actually look like looking out. So now you can see those doors, see who's actually coming in, and then who would be coming to those doors to buzz in or out. So going to have a pass-through window, it'll be a storefront protected, encased area, and she could actually lock down inside an enclosed area. So if you had a lockdown in school, she hadn't know where to get. So that will help whoever is is out at that receptionist area, and it's a pretty sizable area. We didn't want to make it like a closet, you know, want to make it sizable, so sometimes we can get a couple of people in there. So I think there's maybe a couple more, Martha, and that'll be it for those pictures. So that's looking from the outer office into where the window will be, and that'll be fully encased in glass and storefront with a pass-through for like forms and papers of whatnot. So it will be a much safer situation, and then the last, that's inside her little area there of the receptionist, and then the very last room, we also put what will end up being a conference room slash command center if we do have to run some type of emergency command. Out of there, we'll have it close by in the front office, but it will be able to be protected in and closed down, locked down if we need to. So that's a pretty significant project to take on, but we look for it to be almost about ninety-five percent complete by the end of next week. The storefront may not be there by next week, but it'll be close. The countertops, the built-in cabinetry, the flooring, all the painting's done, ceiling tiles mainly back in, so getting really close. So getting really close, and I'm excited about that for the high school. That's a, something I have a vested interest in and have been interested in for a few years during my time there, so I know that it's very much needed. Also, we have put some of that money to work toward access card readers in two locations and some cameras down at JMS campus. As you know, JMS has multiple buildings that are not connected, and so it creates a safety issue. Mr. Thompson and I have spent a lot of time talking about the best way to do this, where card readers would be a very big help, so you can give a card to a student to go to the nurse and get in that building, or go to the counselor, or go to the front office, and they can get themselves in the building and back up to the other building without leaving those buildings unsecured. So that is something that I know Mr. Thompson has been concerned about, we've talked about. So we've got a solution for that, and that is in process as well. And then the last thing, from the social safety and security side, the sheriff's department's been in contact with me about putting a flock camera on Dragon Drive. So I don't know if you realize it, but there's flock cameras throughout our county, and what they do is they snap a, a picture of a tag when it, when it goes by, and it runs the tag for any worms or any possible, you know, from other states or anywhere, somebody might be wanted, connected to that tag, or a missing child, or cars, a lot of things it can do. And they reached out to us about putting one on Dragon Drive so that we might be alerted if someone's coming in there that doesn't need to be there. Again, we've got a welcome center, but they don't run the tags, you know, for everybody coming in. So that's something that we're working with them on to, to get them access to that, and that should be up and running pretty quick. So looking forward to that. Just another level of security for us there. As far as other construction projects, we had, I met the Geotech company there this week, they did some drilling to determine where, you know, for the practice field and the, in the fieldhouse location, so if they run into any issues with the dirt or the rock underneath there, they know it before they bid the grading, so that was something that had to happen. And then we are having a meeting tomorrow here with the architect and construction manager, more or less a kickoff meeting to, to lay out the timeline, to show us what, you know, what's next. We're moving right along with that, and I hope that we will have a gross maximum price for you guys soon that we put in front of you, and then you guys will vote on and tell us whether we want to continue with that. But there's speed steps have to, have to take place before that happens, but we're getting close. On Dragon Drive, we talked about the paving project. I began writing an RFP, looking at some other counties that had paving RFPs. We slowed down a little bit on this just from the DOT standpoint, with looking at that lane coming in there, there is, it's, it's gonna be more than just paving, gonna be a little grading to have to take place there because there is a significant ditch on that side, and it is going to affect some of the DOT right away. So when that happens, we obviously want to be in contact with them, and then also, I know you recall this, that, that is an easement that we have there, it's not our property there. So a little bit of work there before we can put that RFP out, because it would need to include the grading portion, possibly some culvert pipe to make that happen through there as well, or, or reroute that water somehow. So a little bit of work to make that happen, but I still think we can get there. Just want to make sure we don't make a misstep or wrong move and the DOT is not involved because it is right there, there right away.
Mr. Wallace?
Yes, sir.
When we get too deeply into that one, if it did the DOT plan to put a roundabout there, how far will that extend up that road? I just, my concern, everybody asking that question, is are we gonna be wasting our money by adding that lane when there might be in a couple of years going to put a roundabout there?
Yes, sir. So the preliminary drawings that they have in their report, and I've looked at them extensively, it does come into that area somewhat, and it is pretty wide there because, you know, they're blending a couple, they're actually blending four total lanes there, two coming out, two coming in, and I think, once I, once I get through this process with them, they will be able to direct us on, hey, you know, this is coming up shortly in the pipeline, this is not gonna be a factor anyway or something to consider anyway. Now, you know, we did change the red light, and it may be that since we changed that, I mean, I don't know if there'd be any accidents at that red light since we put a protective arrow there. And, and if they collect that data and decide that maybe that's not, maybe that's a, maybe that's a solution, we don't need a roundabout there, then they could perhaps put that somewhere else. I'm not sure how that will work, but they are pretty far along, I mean, they've got the whole plan and survey done, and so it has a project number with the DOT, so that's something that we're working through with that. I mean, that's a good point, and that's something that we certainly wouldn't want to put a lot of money into, and then it get, you know, a year, get, you know, ripped out and, and redone anyway. So, but the paving project, we're gonna have to probably before that happens, go ahead and take care of. We've got some road deterioration there, and we don't want to get into a point where we have to repack and, and rebase and grind, so we want to get that done before we get in, into a further issue there. But yes, that is something we're looking at very closely in that area. So it is, I agree with you, if we're gonna do that, we would need that lane extended. That's a good idea, but we don't want to do it if it's gonna be there for a few months or a year, so.
No, but if it's gonna be much longer, I would be more inclined to, hey, let's, let's, let's not wait, let's get this done and get the road paved and move on.
Yes, sir. I agree. So over at Harmony School Property, School Road Property, where our transportation, maintenance, and Harmony Elementary are, the survey's been ordered, should be completed this month on that property, and Harmony Playground, met with a couple of different people, looking at a few different options, and also our current playground folks who install our equipment, have installed our equipment for years, and what it would take to potentially relocate that as well. So gonna try to put all that together in the package for Dr. Thomas and have him, as soon as I get all the figures on that, back to me, to look at the options there and let you guys decide how you want to address that. Transportation. So as you guys know, we hired a new transportation director, Mr. Todd Harris, he's actually here with us tonight, so hopefully get to say hey to him if you hadn't already. He's assisting us through navigating through this new software program, gonna be transitioning over to the new routing software, Traversa. He, when we were interviewing and talking about him coming here, he, he explained to me how, how much knowledge he had and experience he had with this program, which made me really happy. And he's already taught me a lot in just a short amount of time about how things are supposed to work with that program, so looking forward to putting his knowledge to use further, and excited to have him on board, I think everybody down there is. Just so you have an idea, a few initiatives, the bus discipline matrix, something that we are gonna be unveiling and going through with this, with the administration and with the drivers here, first of the year, something that will keep consistent discipline in, or disciplinary measures in practice. And then the Tyler Technologies tablets and the GPS tracking on buses that we talked about, that will open up a lot of avenues for us to better communicate with families and make sure families know where their kids are, and help our drivers as well, and sub-drivers especially, get on the bus and not have to use paper routes, they can have a, a GPS tablet telling them, you know, where the stops are and who's supposed to be on there. That's really, really important technology to stay in time. And then the radio system upgrade, I wanted to mention this because been in contact with Randy Powell, who owns the property up on Monument Road, our tallest point that we can get a radio signal at in the, in the county, and we have a secondary station for our radios that's not being used right now over at the old JMS, old high school building, and so I've been in touch with a radio company, and we are going to install that, that station up there, and he's not gonna charge us very much at all to hopefully expand our radio coverage for our drivers. There's been some significant connectivity issues with our radios out there on some of our routes, and this radio system right now provides about seventy percent of our, our geographic coverage in the county, and that's not enough. It's, it's a safety issue, it's a communication issue, and you can imagine how frustrating it is for the drivers not be able to get contact back with someone when they're out there on the bus, especially if they need help. So we are, we're, we're getting, moving on with that, I would like to have that in place as soon as possible, but it's, it's gonna take the radio company actually, you know, uninstall and install it, but we have the expensive part, the equipment, so that's the good news there. And then also just looking forward to attracting, retaining quality staff. As always, we're looking for great people, fully staffed in the, in the driver department, but almost fully staffed in the, in the maintenance department there with our mechanics, and we're still working on that, and I had an interview with one today, so looking forward to getting that shored up and getting them the help they need, be fully staffed there, and that department keep our buses running safely and effectively. In your packet, on the school health update, I won't go through all of this, but there's some highlights there I wanted to make you aware of. On the accomplishments page, which I think is page five, just wanted to walk you through a few things there. Ms. Smith, our nutrition, or excuse me, Director of Health Services, put together this packet for us and this kind of yearly report, you know, she gives us a monthly report, but she put this together for, for yearly, and kind of show you what we've been able to do, and I want to point out that we've got some very generous partners in the healthcare industry that have stepped up here in this county, and we're very fortunate to have that, that partnership with those guys, especially Northside and Piedmont Hospitals, Pickens Urgent Care, and then, you know, just our local municipalities, they're always so good to, to help us out with, you know, Pickens Fire and Rescue, Emergency Management folks, and then Children's Healthcare of Atlanta, who, who aren't really local, but they stepped up and helped, and Ms. Smith has a direct contact there with those people, and, and they're super. And so we're just really fortunate to be in a place where people come together to look out for the health, safety, and wellbeing of our students, and just, I mean, the numbers here are unbelievable when you start looking at the kind of care and impact that, that are being given here for our, for our students on behalf of them and our families. And then just, you know, the, the mobile dental care, like was mentioned earlier, in the, in the Pickens Urgent Care Mobile Care Center, that they're able to go to schools and test students and treat students, so, and faculty even here, so anywhere in our district. So the, the students aren't the only ones that are benefiting from this, and just appreciate Ms. Smith's work in getting all this set up and getting all these connections to these people that are so generous to help us and willing to help us in our community. And then the last thing she provided there was a, was a school health services scorecard table, and it kind of tells you what some of the initiatives and objectives that she has been working on through that department and where we're at with those, and just appreciate her work and her organization of getting all these things and these initiatives going in the right direction. So thank you, Ms. Smith, appreciate that. At this time, I would like to, for our school nutrition update, I'd like to get Ms. Beth Thompson up here, she's gonna address you guys directly about a few things and share some information about her department. So, Ms. Thompson, could you come up, please?
Good evening, Dr. Thomas, board members. So there was a couple things that I just need to bring to your attention this time of year. First of all is our wellness policy, and that is a, just as a background, the local school wellness policy is a written document that guides a local school district's effort to establish a school environment that promotes students' health, wellbeing, and ability to learn. It contains goals for nutrition promotion and education, physical activity, and other school-based activities that promote wellness. The, this also includes, of course, the standards for all foods and beverages sold to students during the day, as well as food and beverages that are given to students during the day on the school campus. So tonight, I'm here to report that all of our schools were in compliance with the wellness program wellness policy goals as outlined in our district-level wellness program policy. All schools have an established local wellness committee that met at least once per semester. All schools have completed two student wellness activities, and also, this is not required, but I'm really happy to see it, all of the schools have participated in providing a wellness activity for the staff to participate in. So it's, it's a good opportunity to be role models, and some of the more common things are the, a take on the biggest losers, and so it's a nice competitive way for people to take care of themselves, so happy to see that. The public can learn more about each school's wellness activities by viewing the wellness policy, and it can be found on the district website on the school nutrition page, and if anybody's interested in volunteering or getting with a local school to be on that committee, maybe we just need to contact the wellness rep at that school. Each school does their own activities, they just have to follow the guidance of the district-level program goals, and, and all, I will be posting all that information on the website if you want to get the contact information for a school that you might be interested in participating on a committee with. Okay, the second item on the agenda was discussion of board policy, food service management, which is descriptor code EE, and that's just a general state board policy. But under that policy, we have a regulation, and in two thousand seventeen, local schools or school food authorities were required to come up with a charge policy and to communicate that to the public. So we did that in two thousand seventeen, we revised it a few times, and I'm revising it again, July twenty twenty-three today. Meal charges are such a sensitive topic, and ultimately, it is the parent or guardian's responsibility to provide the means for their child to be properly fed, we all know that. And so we have several options for our parents to choose from. They can set up an account with our electronic payment system, My Payments Plus, of course, to pay in advance, they can send money with their child to school, they can provide a lunch from home and ensure that their children eat breakfast at home before they come to school, and then, of course, they can complete a free reduced meal application to see if they're eligible for benefits for their children. So although our meal program is intended to be a prepay program or pay as you go, we do have a charge policy that includes limited charge privileges. When a student arrives at school without money, they will be allowed to charge meals up to twelve dollars. That is a new level for this amount for this year. This is a benefit that we extend to allow time to notify the parent and guardian to provide the needed funds to cover the meals. The parent guardian notification piece is so critical to ensuring that our students' meals accounts are in good standing. The school nutrition program staff will send weekly notices with delinquent meal balances to the household, and we've done that in the past through our Infinite Campus electronic messaging system. We've done help of Dr. Shea with our technology with, we're doing, you know, emails, text messages, phone calls, you know, all of that. We also send notices home from the school level, but there's no guarantee they're ever gonna get to the parent, so again, we take, take that into consideration. So once the charge limit has been met, the parent or guardian will get a call from the school nutrition program manager. This is something that is gonna be a lot more work for my staff. In the past, we've just been sending communications, emailing, printing letters, you know, getting to the teachers' mailboxes for elementary, but I've told them that we've got to take more action this year and we have to stay on top of it. Again, it is not the children's responsibility, we know that, and we are not going to not feed the children, but at some point, we have to hold the parents accountable, so we will be calling them. If additional action is required, if they do not send a lunch, they do not send money to school, and the charges keep occurring, then they will be contacted by myself, and I'll see if we can work out a payment plan, because again, even if they can make some sort of contribution, if they can't pay it all off at once, that's fine, at least pay towards it, so we will work on that. And then, if that doesn't work, then I'm gonna rely on my principal pals, and, and we'll refer the parent guardian to the principal for assistance, and, and the principal may refer to the council or to a social worker if we find that there's a need, where there's a situation in a household where the kids, there's some neglect going on, and they're not being fed, and there's money coming in, and they're not paying for the meals. So again, as I said when I started, this is all such a very sensitive and not a fun issue, and I'm not a bill collector by trade, so it's, it's not at all fun for me either. And like I said, it's not the child's responsibility to make sure they have the means to be properly fed, so like I said, while we're notifying the parent guardian, we will continue to keep feeding the children their lunch, and that means charges will still keep accruing as we try to collect the money. Something new that I'd like to do second semester, and we will communicate this all throughout the first semester to make people aware of, but we want to do a pilot in the second semester where we change the point of, point of service, which is where the kids punch in their number. We want to turn it around so that the kids will actually go to the point of service first, plug in their number. If they've exceeded the charge limit and don't have money, we will offer them an alternate meal. This way, the cashier can identify before they've picked up a tray, and this, you know, it's still not fun, but it's, you know, we're not putting them on the spot, and we're giving them an option, and we're not taking away a tray. Our proposal is to pilot this at two schools, and I've selected Jasper Middle School and Pickens High School as the two schools that I want to run this pilot at, and we will start it in January and go from there. And the alternate meal, I'm giving it as a courtesy meal, it's nothing to get excited about, it's gonna be a cheese sandwich and either a milk or a juice, okay? It's not meant to be their sustance for the rest of the school year, it's a temporary thing until we can get them to pay the money, so. So that's all this that we're trying to do, again, we're not gonna not feed the kids, but at some point, we have to have some sort of, I don't want to say retaliation, but we have to have some sort of leverage in order to get these parents to pay. I'm actually in the process now of contacting a lot of households. Last couple of days, I've been calling parents and guardians of those households where the children, where most of our charges are at right now, and, and I've talked to several today, and they're like, I'm not gonna pay this. And I'm like, okay, will you fill out an application? You know, so I'm trying to find a way to, and a lot of them are like, well, I lost my job, or, and like, that's when you need to contact us and complete an application, and anytime your income situation changes, fill out a new application. Once you're approved, that eligibility is good for the entire year, even if you should get a job or win the lottery, you don't. You don't.
Battery went in.
Oh.
Some people were low-winded.
I used to turn it. So, at any rate, we're with, let's see, that's weird. Okay, what was I saying? That's true. All right. At any rate, we're going to work with the families and, and, you know, but when they flat out say, I'm not going to pay it, a lot of times they're like, well, I'm going to pay my other bills because I know you're going to keep feeding them. And so, that's what I keep hearing. So, we're just going to keep, we will keep feeding them, but we're just going to see when we do this pilot, if that's a way to try to curb some of that, that debt from occurring. So, we will be communicating the charge policy. Can you all hear me? We will communicate the charge policy at the beginning of the year. I'm just sending flyers for the schools to put in the beginning of the year packets, either for the open houses or to send home, so that every parent is aware. I'll also send it to the principals to incorporate into their handbooks. It'll be on our website, you know, so it'll be out there for them to be able to see. So, now, I do have some good news to share. You want some good news?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, two things, actually. This year, households, if they're eligible for reduced meal benefits, it's normally 40 cents for lunch, 30 cents for breakfast. This year, the state of Georgia is going to cover that price. They're going to cover that 40 cents and that 30 cents. So, in effect, if somebody's eligible for reduced meals, they will also get their meals for free. So, there won't be any charges occurring for them. So, I thought that was good news. It's not a ton of money, but it adds up for these folks, okay? And then the other thing that is happening in our little world is USDA has approved for LEAs to go ahead and use Medicaid benefit issuance as a determination for earning eligibility for free reduced meals. We will get this information from the state, just like we get our direct certified information. It'll come through the state portal, and then we'll import that and match it to the kids in our district. And there will be a category for Medicaid-free and Medicaid-reduced. And why this is good news is the income limitations for Medicaid are much higher than what they are for like just applying as a free reduced meal application. So, we feel like it's going to allow more people to be eligible for benefits. I think it's going to help a lot of folks, because a lot of folks that are, and every year they fill out applications, they put their Medicaid number on, thinking they're going to be approved. It's like, we can't do that. This year, we're going to be able to do that. So, I'm excited about that. So, we'll see how that goes. And lastly, it's on the agenda later as an action item, but I just want to mention and see if there's any questions that I am asking to do a 25 cent per meal cost for students at all levels. And really, it's just, it's a necessity. I mean, the rationale, of course, food is not getting any cheaper, it's still going up. Labor is expensive, but the most expensive part of that, of course, is health insurance, which we're paying, you know, $250 more per person per month. And then, of course, supplies, my vendors are telling me supplies are running 12 to 15% higher for a lot of the things that we were buying last year. So, all of that is just to say, I can't stay where we, where we're at. We haven't raised meal prices since 2019, '20. So, going up to 25 cents, we are still well within the range of everybody around us, well, people that are like us. So, we're, we're just like Cherokee, but that, they don't really matter because they're so big, right? But they're charging 270, we're going to be charging 265, 270 for our middle and high schools. So, anyway, I just wanted to let you know that. And again, I mean, at school nutrition, we're separate fund, you know, we, we are housed here in the school district. We thank you very much for letting us be here. But we try to pay our own bills and be fiscally responsible. And so, I need to always maintain at least a three-month fund balance to cover our expenses. And so, that's why, again, I want to make sure that I'm a good steward with the money, but also charge enough to, to maintain that, so I don't have to borrow from any general fund. And that's what he desperately needed for the kiddos in the classroom. So, any questions on that? Yes, sir.
For the ones that are, that will qualify for Medicaid, you said they'll be free or reduced, but the reduced will be free?
It'll still be free, yes. But I mean, I'll have to put them in our system categorically reduced, because we'll still, we'll still submit a claim for reduced, free, and paid, and then the state will reimburse us whatever the 40 and the 30 cents of that paid price for the student. So, yes. And so, and I'm going to share that with our community as well. So, anyway, it was good news.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Thompson. That concludes our operations update. Is there any questions I can answer for you guys, if anything, operational?
I would just like to point out about the flock camera on Drag and Drop. I know that there's been a lot of, there's always talk on social media, right, about cameras and overpolicing and all of that. But I also would like everyone to pick up the progress from last week about cameras alerting the sheriff's office to a possible person entering the county that had made a threat on a local judge. And so, I, I think those are the same kind of cameras that they're just talking about for Drag and Drop, and where I don't like to be overpoliced on anything. I think everybody knows that. I do want it for our children and our employees, so they're safe. So, if there's ever a credible threat, moving that way into the county, I'm ready to call Sheriff Craig and his people out at any time.
Yes, I am.
I like that.
Just want to make any ways it'll help protect us.
Yes.
Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone. Our next item, a motion to approve the personnel report as presented. Mr. Lauer. Do I hear a second?
All second.
Does there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Next item is approval of the FY23 budget amendment that Amy went over with us previously. Do I have a motion to approve the FY budget, FY23 budget amendment as presented?
Salute.
Mr. Gibson, do I hear a second?
Second.
Mr. Lauer, is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Next item is approval of the FY24 tentative budget. And I will make a motion that we approve the FY24 tentative budget as presented. May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Next item is the consent agenda, which includes a number of items listed there. Public, the final approval of new public participation policy at board meetings, our policy on medications, approval of the financial reports, the student handbook of conduct for 2023, '24 school year, approval of recommendations for student meal price, Health Connect, Georgia Home MOU with Pickens County School District, which includes some help from mental services, minutes from the three previous board meetings, and surplus at the junior high media center technology from the high school and from Harmony. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Salute.
Mr. Lauer, do I hear a second? Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Next item, public participation. Dr. Thomas, have we received any requests for public participation in this meeting?
No, sir, we have not.
Next item, board comments. If we, before we get quite to that, we've got a lot of new faces.
Mr. Garcia, if you'll let me introduce our new principals, we've got several this year. And so, we're grateful they have answered the call to lead. We are grateful they've chose us, and I'd like to introduce our new principals at this time. We've got Miss Canyon Petty from, that should be the new principal at Harmony Elementary. We've got Angie Chrismire. Angie's new principal at Hill City Elementary. We've got, we've got Scott Stevens, our new principal at Tate Elementary. We've got Matt Combs, our new principal at Pickens High School. We've got our new transportation director, Todd Harris, here with us tonight, too. We will catch Dr. Josh Heath, our new principal at the junior high school in August. And we'd like to also introduce our, our lone remaining principal from last year, Cora Johnson. But I would like to say, again, as I mentioned in the executive session, we are, we are fully staffed at the school level, which is fantastic, and that is a, kudos to these men in the audience. That is, it takes a lot of hard work. The summer gets, gets getting shorter and shorter, and I'm grateful for their work and looking forward to working with them to lead our district forward. So, thank you, Mr. Garcia.
Welcome. And, you know, hopefully you found a nice place or two to eat here in town. There's a lot more than there used to be. And I do hope your wife has found a grocery store by now.
I am welcome to all the new faculty that we have. I have a rising junior, I think everyone knows that at Pickens High School. And, you know what, change is hard. Change is hard. I don't like change, but it's, it's always necessary to some extent. I'm looking forward to the notes this year that we have. And let's allow some grace and some patience and some excitement, and let's give it some time. A little bit of prayer never hurt, good communication, but just, you know, this board is very open to everyone. And so, if there's something that's going on, you know, reach out to your new principal. You know, there's, there's going to be moving forward in this district that I love so well. There's going to be some communication, and there's going to be some, some listening and some moving forward together and working together, and that is our goal. And that may seem like a new concept to a lot of folks, but that's the way we're going to move forward as a whole. And so, just, if something happens that you don't like in the first two weeks, three weeks, reach out to someone at your school. I promise you, they will listen, they will talk with you, they will sit down with you, and they'll work it out. So, let's, let's just give it some time moving forward and see where we're at. What do you think?
Thank you. So, what do you have anybody?
No, nothing more to add. I think Angie put it very well.
I think so, too. That's it. I will make a motion to adjourn this meeting. May I have a second?
Aye.
Is there any discussion? I thought not. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned at 7:06 PM.